All right, are we staff ready now? Okay, we are going to call to order the January 13, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. We have roll call, please.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Copfer.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
And Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Lisa Walker is absent.
Here.
Thank you very much. In front of us, we have a consent agenda. If the commission would like to take the consent agenda as all five minutes at once, I would be willing to take a motion. If you want to take them separately, let me know.
All motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve all five minutes as written. Is there any discussion? There was one scrivener error that I noted on the December 9 meeting that Connie Randall needed to be listed as staff, and I've turned that in for correction. Harry, no other comments? Oops.
I do. There was two in areas where I was labeled as John Clifford and not Commissioner Clifford. I don't know if that's a big deal, but it's worth noting. I can show you where. It was on the, in December 9, and it was page 26. And the other one was. Apologize for this. It was page, page 35. And those are the only two that I indicated. Yes, that is correct.
All right. Any other corrections or notations? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as noted and changed signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda passed. Council liaison announcements. It says the mayor, but as.
I'm not the mayor.
And not officially our formal liaison, but Sally?
Yes.
You have a.
Can I just introduce Sally Robinson? So, just for the record, former Commissioner Robinson was sworn in last Tuesday to council. So she was Counselor Robinson and was actually appointed council president. So she is now Council President Robinson. And then on Saturday, the council met to discuss board and commission liaison assignments, and she is your official council liaison to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so it is.
Well, it's not official. I haven't been, I haven't actually been appointed, but I have volunteered to continue meeting with you every Tuesday that you meet. So happy to do that. I do enjoy the work before the Planning Commission, so that's exciting. The only news I have to really report is that Julia did a great job this morning communicating to the Chamber of Commerce at our monthly meeting. Kind of her long-range growth comments and was well received. And then unfortunately, we were expected to have a work session committee meeting to continue moving forward in our progress. And Counselor Henderson and Mr. Griffin apparently objected to that this evening. It's done.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Anyway, so I look forward to moving together and getting things before you to us. Thank you.
I would like clarification, because I absolutely have no idea what you're talking about.
I don't know, I truly don't know the name.
I don't even know how my name came up.
But there was a work session scheduled this evening, and there were some comments raised about whether or not the notice was done properly. And so after talking with Legal, my understanding is the city manager, and I believe it's the mayor, but I'm not positive, decided to reschedule that meeting.
Okay, let's nip this rumor in the bud right now. First of all, I object to you claiming that I did something to sabotage that meeting. I want that on the record, because that is not true. Here's what I did. I emailed Sylvia and I said, hey, I went to the website, and all I see is the notice that there's going to be a work session. I was wondering if there was an agenda. And she emailed back and said, no, but here's a list of topics. And I went back to an email that I got from Brad, or Joe's weekly update, and I saw the list of topics. And then she emailed and said, oh, here's the list of topics. And then later in my email, I'm so upset, just a minute, then later in my email came the actual agenda. And I said, oh, thanks. That is all I had to do with this. So again, on the record, I am strongly upset that you accused me of sabotaging a meeting. I had no idea. You guys didn't even have the meeting. I want that on the record.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Uncalled for.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Okay, then I will call for staff announcements.
Good evening, Commissioners. So a couple of things, I get quite a few announcements. So just a quick update on the Sherwood West. We are having an informational meeting for 43 community advisory committee applicants on January 26. So that was a very good turnout for, we'll be able to fill, was it 13 positions out of those 43. The first community advisory committee meeting scheduled for the Sherwood West program is at Edie Ridge Cafeteria on February 5, 2015, where we will discuss the project objectives, a schedule, we'll talk briefly about existing conditions, and discuss the methodology for our buildable lands inventory that's being completed for the housing needs analysis.
For clarification, the meeting on January 26 is open to the public as an introduction to the Sherwood West project, but focused on the 43 applicants. So anybody can attend, but the 43 applicants have been specifically invited so they can get an introduction to the process and the commitment that would be required if they are appointed to the citizen advisory committee, correct?
That's correct. So it is purely an informational meeting and targeted and geared towards those 43 applicants, but we will be highlighting some of the objectives and things of their expectation.
The February 5 meeting, if people want Sherwood West information, that's the best meeting to attend then.
Exactly, and that'll be held again at Edie Ridge Cafeteria on the 5th. And I believe that our tentative start time is 6:00 p.m.
At what time?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Thank you.
On February 3, there'll be a joint Planning Commission and City Council work session. And at that, they will be talking about the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the proposed code amendments that you guys put forward in your last meeting. And we'll also be talking about marijuana regulation. And this is kind of a key step in this, because we have to get something in place prior to our moratorium ending in May. So want to make sure that we get the ball rolling on that and get some direction from council. So come with your questions and suggestions to that work session. And we'll have an issue paper together for that to kind of explain to you what's been happening elsewhere with marijuana regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Sad to announce that we have a Planning Commission vacancy, and then we have some upcoming vacancies. Glad to announce that we, Commissioner Simpson and the mayor preliminarily subject to a meeting on the 20th, where the council is expected to appoint Dr. Allan Pearson to the Planning Commission. And rather, he's not here this evening, so I didn't want to give a big introduction. I think Allan can give his own introduction when he gets here, and you'll enjoy it. So I'll let him do that. But there are some upcoming vacancies, I think Commissioner Clifford, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, my term ends, is this on? My term ends in the end of March, and I have decided not to renew my term. But I do have an interest in joining the Parks and Planning Board. So that's where my focus is at this time. I've already submitted an application.
Our loss will hopefully be their gain.
And then Commissioner Cook has thrown her name in the hat for the council position, so we may lose her as well. So sad to say. With that, I have the other three things on my agenda.
Same sentiment, but you're elected.
The Tonkin Employment Area, which I'll let Julia speak to, and the Tannery EPA grant.
Yes, Brad mentioned that Chair Simpson wanted to get an update on these, and I'm glad that you asked. Thank you. We should be giving updates more regularly on those anyways, and so I should make more of an effort to do that. The Tonkin Employment Area, the city received a grant in concert with Washington County for a total of $371,446 to do large lot industrial site assessments throughout Washington County, and then focusing in on the Tonkin Employment Area and doing essentially an implementation plan and marketing strategy to try to identify what's not happening out there that's causing that area to not develop, and what can we do to maybe help it develop. Just identifying whether or not there's, you know, marketing, funding, what it is that maybe we can make tweaks to the development code, or explore further to see what we could do to start bringing that area and jobs online. The consultants have actually been working for the past few months on the large lot site assessments, and they're going to be wrapping that up, I believe, in the next month or so. And then they'll be moving on to the Tonkin Employment Area focus probably mid-February through May. So we'll be coming back to you, I'm sure, with more information as that project comes a little bit more close to home, and we'll need input from our community as we do that process. And then, any questions on that?
Is, what's, so the process for the grant, is it going to allow us an opportunity to get public input on how they would see that area developing, or what?
Minimally. We already had the concept plan that had a lot of public involvement on how we wanted to see that area developed. So this is really looking at what is, you know, looking at the market conditions, talking with property owners and business owners about what's stopping our vision from being a reality. And there might be recommendations at the end of it, so it's not necessarily going to be something that we adopt and implement. It might identify, okay, if you really want this, then you're going to have to do that. And then we'd have to have another public dialogue on, okay, do we want to do that? So we don't know yet exactly what that's going to look like.
Okay.
And then the other thing that I, well, I'm not sure if you asked for, but Brad added it to my list of things to talk to you about, is the Tannery EPA grant. We received a $200,000 grant from the federal government through the EPA to do a site assessment on the orphan properties of the Tannery. They're actually owned by Washington County now through foreclosure, to do site assessments and start identifying potential cleanup plans, really with the intent of helping the city decide whether or not that's property that they want to acquire and do something more with. One of the things that has been talked about more internally than with the community as a whole, but the possibility of moving the public works yard over from the current location in Old Town over there that would allow more space, and then also open that area up for more redevelopment that's more consistent with the Old Town vision. So that's kind of the framework of what we'll be looking at, not planning for that move, but identifying whether or not we want to have the property to think about planning for the move. And so that's, that project actually is just starting. We just selected a consultant, but I'm not sure if I can name who it is, because we haven't actually started formal contract negotiations with them yet. So hopefully soon, I'll be able to announce that.
Okay, thank you. You're right, there are a lot of staff announcements.
I guess you might just want to talk about the green slip at the back of the room, too?
I can.
Close mine.
I very carefully put it someplace, which is now covered with a whole bunch of these really big architectural drawings. We've been talking a lot about how to get the community involved and engaged so that they're aware of projects that are coming up, not only in front of the Planning Commission, but in front of the Planning Department, which includes the hearings officers and staff decisions. And in the back of the room are green pages that allow a citizen to sign up for email notifications, and it would put you on a group mailing list that would allow you to receive notification when a planning decision is in the works. And there is also a way to sign up online. Kirsten has put three different links within the Planning Department and the Planning Commission news sites, and one other place she told me that is available from online, and then you would sign up. If you sign up online, you can sign up for all departments or select departments. If you sign up here tonight on the green sheet of paper, you're signing up specifically for the Planning Department notifications. So this is an opportunity for you to know about more applications as they come.
Actually, what will happen is I'll take those emails and sign them up, and they'll need to confirm through email that they receive using that email. So if they sign up for an email, I will sign them up for that.
For planning.
And then they will receive an email to confirm that they want to be part of that notification.
Right.
It's a weekly notification that will come over the weekend and tell you which pages have been updated for those, the Planning Commission and the planning news.
All right, and that's, it's been a little, I've received calls from citizens that were confused, thinking that when they signed up for the meeting, that they were signing up for that. And we're, really, when they sign up for a particular hearing that we're hearing, that's the only information you get signed up for. And this will allow you to sign up for, like Kirsten said, a weekly notification. So thank you very much for doing that. And then, as a Planning Commission, we have not dropped the traffic calming process, and I know citizens in the past have been concerned about Lindley Way and other areas. I've talked with staff again, and it's not in the budget, and we need to keep it on the council's and the budget committee's process, that traffic calming, the process, and what the citizen would need to, the city needs to outlay in order to improve any particular district is not a budgeted item as of right now. So still on our radar, we have.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate that. I know that, you know, Commissioner Simpson wanted to get an update, and I told her, I don't have an update.
No update. We don't have a budget.
Again, I'll reiterate, it is on our radar. It is something we're very aware of. We're working on it. And really, what I hope to have happen is to have something, you know, a more formal policy and procedure in place, and budgeting to actually help us, you know, so it doesn't do great to go, yep, there's a problem, but we don't have any funds to do anything about it. So we really need to have that conversation. Obviously, you know, funding is going to be a very big conversation, and the council and the budget committee will ultimately need to make some tough decisions, I'm sure. But that's kind of where we're at, and we're aware of it, and I continue to appreciate the comments being made.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other staff comments coming up at this time. Community comments, these are any comments that are not directly related to an item already on the agenda. And if you are interested in talking tonight under community comments, or under either one of the public hearings that we're having tonight, we ask you that you complete one of the blue forms in the back and turn it in to the commission secretary so that we can have that. I don't see anybody moving towards community comments, so we will move right on to new business. As is defined in the Sherwood Zoning and Community Development Code, a new Planning Commission chair and vice chair are to be elected in odd calendar years. And so we will have an election this evening for, so we'll open nominations for chair of the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate you to continue as chair.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that I will continue as chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none, and I do accept the election. All right. Now we have a position open for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Well, I would love to nominate Lisa Walker, but she's absent tonight and could not accept. Won't be able to discuss, so.
All right. I would, I would elect or nominate Russell Griffin. He has served on this commission for a long time, and.
I second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations?
If he wants to do it, I should say.
Sure, yes.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. All those in favor of Russell serving as our vice chair, say aye.
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 Opposed? Russell, you are.
Thank you.
Vice chair. All right. We will now have a public hearing. Just, like I said, I got this much room for all these binders.
Why don't I scoot my binder?
Oh, I just need to find this.
Because we can share the binder.
I just need this. So again, if you are going to be speaking tonight regarding either one of the public hearings before us, we do request that you complete a blue form and turn it in to the commission secretary. All right. The public hearing on SP 1403 Lam Research Major Modification is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, 15 minutes, questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. Applicant will be allowed 30 minutes, and that needs to be split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant will be the remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. There'll be final comments by staff up to 15 minutes, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the applicant meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulation. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria and other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to the city council or land use boards of appeal on that issue. Also, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again, with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest as related to the SP 1403 Lam Research Major Modification.
I did visit the site.
I did as well, yesterday.
I Googled it.
Man, I drive past it every day, back and forth to work. And it does not preclude me from participating in this process. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate? All right. The Planning Commission is the decision-making body on this application, and any appeal will be to the city council. Planning staff will now present their reports.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Simpson. Project is called Lam Research Site Plan Modification. The applicant, Lam Research, proposes to add 54 parking spaces to an existing industrial site by restriping the existing driveways around the perimeter of the building. It's a site plan major modification, because Lam Research will be adding over 100 average daily trips to the site, and that's one of the criteria for a major modification. So all major modifications require the same decision-maker as the original site plan decision, which is, in this case, is the Planning Commission. And we're only looking at a review of the code criteria for the issues that the applicant is proposing. In this case, it would be the parking lot and the parking lot landscaping and all of the things that are attributed to parking lots. So we kind of covered that everybody knows where the site is, but I'll reiterate that it's off of Tuolleton Sherwood Road north, in the northeast portion of the city. You can kind of see up there in the right, top of the right corner, outlined in red, the building where it's located. It's, the physical address is 20551 Southwest Wild Rose Place. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac. Zooming in a little bit more from my maps, the star property is where it's located. It was originally part of a development in 1998. It's the former Pacific Foods Distribution site. It is just under five acres in size. The building is 100, over 100,000 square feet, 100,400 square feet. It's zoned general industrial. It's surrounded by other general industrial properties, and it has currently 21 parking spaces with a water quality facility you can kind of see in the side there, as well as three big delivery bays. And, let's see. Lam Research is in the semiconductor industry, and they will be putting warehousing and light assembly in that facility. They are part of, this will be kind of a satellite office for them. Their primary location is in California, actually, but then they have another building in Tuolleton that they also utilize. They'll have three different, they're proposing three different shifts of 25 employees, different times a day, and most of the added traffic is for the deliveries that will occur during the course of the day. So we haven't received any citizen comments about the project or the proposal as of this date. And here's a look at the site plan that they're proposing. As you can see, it's perimeter parking surrounding the building. They're going to convert the driveways into one-way drive aisles. Most of the conditions, the recommended conditions of approval are pertaining to making sure that there's adequate signage, making sure that the landscape islands are the proper size, and that the landscaping plan meets the canopy requirements that we have in place. And those recommended conditions are listed in the staff report as well. We had, received some comments from Clean Water Services. They are satisfied with the existing facilities on site. Tuolleton Valley Fire and Rescue has reviewed the proposal and made a few recommendations that are listed in the staff report as well. One of the main issues with this project was the engineering portion with respect to the traffic information, TIA, that talked about the mobility targets on Wild Rose Place, which means that there, there's too much wait time on Wild Rose and intersection of Tuolleton Sherwood Road that fails what the targets are for the length of wait that traffic should have at that intersection. So in looking at, how could we mitigate that situation, there's not an opportunity to put a light in. You know that there's a light already in Seipole, and there's a light at Oregon, and that would be too problematic to have a third light at Wild Rose Place. So one of the options that was discussed in the transportation study was to add left turn lane on Wild Rose Place by restriping. And Bob Gladiar, city engineer who's here tonight, can answer questions about that. But in weighing that alternative, he found that that really wouldn't satisfy, still wouldn't meet the mobility targets if there were to be a left turn lane added there, and it would be problematic for the trucks turning, that they would use. it would be problematic for the trucks turning, that they would use both lanes anyway. So the mitigation measure really wouldn't achieve the result that would be, that would meet those targets. So he's not recommending that at this time. And to really look for a longer-term solution, there's some properties to the east there that are, we're waiting to develop and that there's opportunities to change the traffic pattern as the area develops over time. Can you answer any questions about that? We received an exhibit from Washington County late today marked as Exhibit G that would be added to the record, and they recommended that the planning commission consider re-striping that on Wild Rose for the reason, for the fact that it doesn't meet mobility targets and the waiting period is too long, and that's their standard answer for situations that So based on that, staff recommends approval of the modification, site plan modification with the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. And at this time, would ask that you hold a public hearing and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so at this time, we, does, do any of the commissioners have questions of staff before we open it up?
I do have a question regarding the... The, during high-traffic time when primarily people are coming home into Sherwood, I noticed that the left-turn signal from Tuolton Sherwood Road to Oregon Street backs up considerably. Has that been identified as far as the amount of cars that back up? That would actually probably interfere with the left-turn sign, or left-turn lane if there was one put in on Wild Rose?
Most of the traffic pattern from the development is towards Tuolton. That's where most of their truck traffic goes. The site is used as a storage warehouse and package parts, assembly area that goes into Tuolton for assembly. So most of their turning movements are in the left hand from Wild Rose onto Tuolton Sherwood Road. So when you're talking about backing up issues, I don't, from my discussions with the traffic engineer and the county, Oregon Street, the congestion there isn't going to be affected as much. What we're really worried about is the left-hand turn movement. If a left-hand turn lane was striped in, that left-hand turn movement impacting trucks trying to make a right-hand turn from Tuolton Sherwood into the site, basically when you're talking about 50-foot, 60-foot-long trucks, they can't make that narrow a turn. Basically, they would be encroaching into that left-hand turn lane. And if a car is in that lane waiting to turn left onto Tuolton Sherwood Road, the truck basically has to wait until there's enough room for it to clear out before it can move. So basically, what we're looking at is congestion going backwards towards Seipole. That's where the congestion starts to really get impacted by this turning configuration change that we're trying to mitigate. Most of this stuff, I'm convinced that the numbers that we've got, if nothing changes right now, the congestion at Seipole and at Oregon basically remain the same. Little bit more traffic flow, yes, but not enough to manage, not enough to cause the changes at the signalized intersections that would require mitigation. The big issue is you've got traffic backing up on Wild Rose. Well, it's a dead-end street coming out onto a major intersection without signals. That's, that's just a short-term problem that we'll have to fix, short-term being a couple of years. What we're really looking at is how do we mitigate that for future and development and trying to get a route through development towards Seipole along back property line that will take that traffic and create a loop, as it were, so that we could actually turn Wild Rose into a, like a right-in, right-out with people coming out at Seipole, coming up to the signal at Tuolton Sherwood Road to make their left-hand turn into Tuolton without waiting. That's the...
A long term.
That's the long term. That's also the, that discussion has also been discussed with the county, and the county agrees with me. That's the best long term and that's what we're trying to work for. Right now, I would say that we don't provide the turn lane because it's going to be an issue with backing up on Tuolton Sherwood Road for that right turn. And that we just leave it and that the people who are down there just have to put up with it until they decide to band together and put that other road in. And it really, them coming together as a group to do that is good economic sense. It's going to reduce their time. Everybody will benefit from it. It'll cost them a little bit of money, but everybody will benefit in the long run.
So I guess, I guess my clarification is that Exhibit G from Washington County specifically calls us to do a, do a specific action, and that is not part of the conditions of approval. And staff's recommending that we do not comply with the request of Washington County and because it's Wild Rose Place is a city street, we can use our own common sense and say, if we stripe it, then a truck turning from Tuolton Sherwood Road will not have enough room to turn right onto Wild Rose Place, which will cause Tuolton Sherwood more impact going back to Seipole. That's, that's one issue. The other issue, which John, I think, and if, I personally have driven this, Oregon Street does back up all the way past Wild Rose on occasion. And I don't know if that's going to be hindered by this project.
Probably not. Again, most of the traffic, except for commuter traffic, is going to be their, their main source of truck traffic is going towards Tuolton, to and from Tuolton. That's what they've indicated to us. So if there's an impact to it, it's going to be that right-hand turn movement from Tuolton Sherwood into the site and the backing up of Wild Rose Place coming onto Tuolton Sherwood.
Right, people won't be able to get out of Wild Rose Place.
No, mobility is just going to be, it's going to take forever.
But the people that are on Wild Rose Place would have an opportunity to do slight shift changes and stuff so that not everybody leaves at the same time also.
Correct. It's going to be an operational thing that they're going to have to take into account, the timing delay that takes them to get out into that traffic, which probably means that future development along the backside of the property is going to be a higher impetus for them to be a part of it and make it come true.
Does that clarify, John, your question about the traffic?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions of staff before we open it up for the applicant? All right. I don't have any blue cards, so I don't know who is coming up to speak. Oh, there we go. All right, with our microphones, you have to kind of make sure the button's off and move it kind of close to you because otherwise the recording device doesn't pick it up.
Not too close.
And if you start with your name and address for the record?
All right, my name is Lance Forney. I live on 3904 Southeast 113th Avenue in Portland. I work for all county surveyors and planners and we are representing the client and the owner of the property, actually, Brad Picking. We've been hired to complete the planning, the surveying, and the onsite civil engineering portions of the project. So we have teamed up with McKenzie that is actually going to be able to answer any questions regarding the traffic analysis. That would be the off-site portion of concern, it seems like, for this project. Basically, I'd like to thank staff for doing a great job with the conditions of approval. It seems like everything on site was pretty straightforward and should be really easy to complete through the final engineering and final design process. So, basically, as stated, we're basically just changing the use of the existing warehouse that was approved in the year 2000, and that use, as stated, will trigger some added average daily trips. So, again, that will go to the off-site portions of the project. And the onsite, the only real obstacle that we were facing was the fire department access. But we worked with the fire department and we have come up with a plan and he is, the fire chief, was actually okay with what we were proposing. We worked with him to make sure the aisle widths were wide enough at, to the point of the buildings where he felt needed to be safe. So, other than that, thank you very much, and any other questions?
So you were in agreement with the conditions of approval as written by staff?
Absolutely.
And you answered the one question that I had, which was the signing and the fire lane that would be around the building. I'm presuming that there will be a fire lane all the way around the exterior of the property, then?
Yes, there will be, absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant at this time?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was the approval from the fire department before after the requirement of adding the wheel stops, which will actually, you'll lose three feet of parking stall space, which may, so the vehicles may be sticking out a little bit farther into the driveway? Is that going to be a problem?
As far as typical parking layout goes to meet the city codes, that's pretty standard. Typically, when we lay out parking lot designs, the, there are wheel spaces that are required and it's just taken into consideration with the length of the actual spaces that are proposed. So I don't see an issue with that happening. I mean, obviously, it is on to the client to, just like it is in any parking lot, to make sure the fire lane stays clear. So I don't really know how you would enforce that. You know? Sorry if that doesn't answer, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Ming, yeah, that's fine.
All right, any other questions? All right, how long was that? Okay, well, you have 28 minutes for rebuttal, so we will...
Does anybody have any questions or would like to speak to McKenzie regarding the traffic or everything?
Yeah, I, so you've, you're taking care of the dimensional of the islands?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and they are laid out to meet code right now on the site plan.
Okay.
The five, I think it's five-foot width minimum and 90 square feet, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they're laid out per that.
Yeah, and that, will that eliminate any of your parking spaces?
No, it will not. They're already currently laid out as such on this plan.
Okay. And are any of the trees that you've selected, are those going to encroach or are the canopies going to provide any problems with the parking if they are required to be put in?
We did, we did get a one comment back and it looked like one of the trees that we had proposed would maybe hinder that. So we are working with a landscape architect to change that tree. We don't do landscape architecture, so we work with them and they'll select the trees that, that won't, you know, hinder that, the movement.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that I actually thought the design was very well done, given the constraints that you had with the site and the number of spaces that you needed to have in order to create this number of jobs. So, yeah, that was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Excited to see that many jobs coming in at, at a place in Sherwood. I, I guess, for the record, I am not dismissing the fact that we see that this is increasing 300 average daily trips, but it's also done, to me, it makes sense. They have three shifts coming in, so it's not like we're doing 75 people at rush hour in the morning and rush hour in the afternoon. I'm presuming there's going to be thoughtful consideration to shift changes going at hours that aren't 5 o'clock in the afternoon. I'm hopeful that'll be done and assigning trucks that can get out not at 5 o'clock in the afternoon when they're trying to get onto Tuolton Sherwood Road.
Yeah.
Has that consideration been made at all?
I'm sure it has, and the reason why I say that is because they are a local company. Obviously, they're down in California is their main corporate office, but because they have an office and distribution plant, actually manufacturing, I believe, maybe at that plant in Tuolton, they're familiar with, with the road system out here and the traffic patterns. And I'm sure they're well aware that that would actually hurt their business as far as distribution is, is, you know, to have trucks coming in as people are leaving and vice versa, so.
Paying truck drivers for sitting.
I believe they'd have to be aware of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, are there any specific questions for McKenzie on their traffic study? I think, I think the summary, the executive summary was very well done. I was able to, you know, a lot of numbers involved, so it's nice when the summary is able to be understood by citizen volunteers, I think. It's very well done, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, we will allow you to keep your rebuttal time. We'll call for other people to speak.
All right.
So if you, you can leave your stuff or, I don't have any other blue cards for people to speak, proponents or opponents? All right, then you have all your 28 minutes for rebuttal, had there been any. So at this time, hearing no one else testify, do you have anything else you would like to add to the record at this time?
No, just thank you very much for your time and...
All right, then we will close the public comment time of this and then we will deliberate.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All right, does staff have any other information to add to this?
No, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission or a motion?
I think the proposal was well done. I think I have a motion standing there.
I did question, Michelle, so if we do not accept the county's recommendation, is there any potential issues that we would have to face due to that? It's a city road, so we don't have to accept it.
It's a, it's a city road. The impacts are not on Tuolton Sherwood Road, one of their roadways, so it's a recommendation based on our transportation consultant as far as a mitigation measure that they could choose. So they're following their protocol is basically the discussion that I had with Washington County. I just wanted to be on the record for what the mitigation would be.
All right?
Yeah, I'm good. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application, SP 1403 Lamb Research Major Modification. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, the analysis, findings, and conditions in the staff report.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve SP 14-03. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Site plan approved. Thank you very much for your time tonight. All right, we will take at least two minutes for us to get rid of big documents and replace them with other big documents. So we just have a three-minute recess, thank you. Okay, so, okay, they're filling out blue forms for us. Okay, so we are back in session and do I need to read the entire thing all over again? Oh, great, because you didn't think I was speaking enough before. All right. Oh, yes. You can hear it from a mile and a half away. I'm just trying to find the number. Why does it have the, why does it have the SP number?
It is that PUD 1401.
It's not on this, PUD 1401. Let me agenda. Oh, what? The public hearing on PUD 1401 Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development Final Development Plan is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, 15 minutes, questions if any by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and time will be limited as follows. Applicant, 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant, which would be the remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the applicant or the applicant. Final comments by staff, up to 15 minutes. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission, discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms in the back of the room and submit to the planning commission secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again, with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would ask members of the commission to disclose ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anybody have any disclosures? As stated in the first hearing, I work for a company that distributes building materials to new construction, and our customers may, at some time, sell to D.R. Horton just by the nature of that, but we do not directly sell to D.R. Horton. We just happen to be in the same industry. And I do not believe that will impede my ability to make an impartial decision this evening. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission members' ability to participate? All right, we will now have a report from the planning staff.
Thank you. So the issue before the planning commission tonight is approval of the final development plan for the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development to ensure insurance and compliance with the preliminary approval of the planned unit development. So to step back a little bit and take us back to June, where the planning commission initially reviewed the planned unit development, we had a couple of hearings back then, and you forwarded a recommendation to city council, and they approved the planned unit development back in August. This step tonight is the final development plan approval, and that's your approval process to make sure that it's in compliance with all of the things that were set forth in the original notice of decision and the conditions of approval, and all of the earlier conditions of approval are still in effect. The final development plan materials have been submitted by the applicant, and there will be an evaluation of the CCNRs are included and review of the architectural details found in the architectural pattern book and some of the elevations that the applicant has proposed, and make sure that the housing design fits with what the community's standards are. Also included in the materials are the applicant's final plat. It's included, marked as Exhibit 8. This is for your reference to show the compatibility with the original preliminary approval, and staff normally reviews final plats for all end divisions through a Type 1 process and before forwarding on that plat, final plat, to Washington County and their review and approval. So that's currently in review at this time by staff, and we haven't released that to Washington County as of yet. To review where the property is, it's on the north side of 99W. It's located next to the Woodhaven Crossing 2, near the Minekey Future Cedar Brookway Roundabout. You can kind of see near the new school location there. It's a 65-lot residential development with a mix of single-family attached and detached homes. Here's a look at the site plan layout, and we have a combination of two-story, two-car garage townhomes. Those will be in the interior of the site, moving out along Cedar Brookway are where the single-family detached homes will be located. All along what was Street A is now Southwest Berkshire Terrace along the east border of the property. Those are all front-loaded, single-car garage townhomes, and along Minekey are also some single garage townhomes as well. So parking is allowed on Cedar Brookway on both sides, as well as one side of Southwest Berkshire Terrace, and that accounts for 71 parking spaces. And with the onsite parking, it comes to 261 parking spaces on the site as a whole, with about four parking spaces per dwelling unit. It averages out to that.
I have a question before you move on, sorry. When we heard this before, there were either 79 or 71 on-street parking, and that's been removed to 71, so how...
I'm sorry, I made a mistake. It's 77.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I thought if we lost six, okay, I just want to make sure if we lost six, that we were aware of that.
I looked down at my notes, and it is 77.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that. So here's a look at what the single garage front-loaded townhomes are proposed to look like. The applicant submitted an architectural pattern book. That's marked as Exhibit 2 in your materials, for the applicant's materials, and it describes the materials that the applicant is proposing to use. Also, you can see along the wall here in the community rooms, some boards that also reflect the materials that the applicant is proposing, different stone and hardy plank siding for your review. Also, talked about the color palette that will be used, and the overall design of the site is considered Northwest cottage style or Craftsman style. The buildings will have at least three different materials. Porches will be covered, and there'll be three different colors with no repeated colors next to each other. Also included in the architectural pattern book will be a checklist that will be submitted with each of the building permit applications, and included with that were the setback requirements for each of the different, the building, each of the different lots. And you might recall that there were varied setbacks that you initially approved with the original preliminary approval. So we took a look at the checklist and identified those, and so each of the checklist will come in, a copy of the checklist will come in on each of the building permits, so that the building permit review, plot plan review, will see that and understand what the confines of that site will be.
Do you want to ask a question about that specifically now or wait till? Because...
We can tackle it now.
I had a question on lots 29 through 38. In the original PUD plan, those lots were specified only to have a 15-foot rear setback and did not specify what the front, that the front porch setback would be a variance, but now that I saw that checklist that you just referred to, and there, there's a variance on the setback on the front porches on all those lots, if I'm reading that checklist correctly.
15-foot minimum front setback.
And, again, I have so many...
I don't think that that's, that's the standard.
Is 15-foot front setback the standard in that zone?
15-foot is, is allowed. That was a text amendment, so that is...
It's not 20-foot? I'm sorry.
That's the standard in the medium-density residential, high and high-density residential is 15 feet.
The front yard.
Front yard setback. 14, sorry, it's 14 feet.
Okay, I'm remembering 20 feet, so it's been, it was a code amendment that changed it. Okay, that was my clarification. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay. So that checklist also includes the variations in the setback and provided the elevations of the porches and making sure that the townhome standards would be in compliance, so that that can be identified during that building permit process. Here's a look at rendering of the rear-loaded townhomes that are found in the center of the site, and an example of a single-family detached unit. Along with the final development plan will include the fencing plan. There'll be perimeter fencing separating the multifamily development with this development, as well as side yard fencing along, along the Cedar Brookway properties, and rear fencing along Southwest Minekey. And included on Southwest Minekey is part of the visual corridor requirement, so some of the fence will be able to be viewed from Southwest Minekey. And in discussions with the applicant, they've agreed to break that wooden fencing up with some masonry pillars on portions of that perimeter fencing to make it look a little bit nicer from the pedestrian view. Also, along with the fencing plan is that connection up at the top of your screen for Track B will be connecting both of those neighbors, and there's easements over all of the pathways as well for public access. So also included are some CCNRs, how the, discuss how the property is to be maintained, talk a little bit about the open space areas, as well as one of the specific conditions that you requested in the preliminary approval to make sure that the garages would be used exclusively for parking. And in reading the CCNRs, it was noted that the garbage receptacles would need to be kept out of view, and so one of the recommended conditions is to account for that with the garages, so that we understand that there's room for those type of extra items in the garage. And speaking with the applicants today, they will go over that a little bit with you tonight on how they're proposing to make that adjustment. Moving on to the open space areas, there's Track E and F in the center. Sorry about the writing there is a little bit hard to read, but it is describing some of the amenities that will be added to those tracks and the garbage receptacles located in the center of the development. And here's Track K, the applicant's proposing fenced-in dog park area, that be landscaped. You can see the proposal there. One of the materials that the applicant was choosing for the dog park, I had some questions about, so I contacted Twolton Valley Park and Rec and had a discussion about what do they use in their dog park, since we don't really have any here? And they weren't really recommending, they weren't disagreeing with the use of a type of bark mulch, per se, because it was a good all-round material to use instead of grass, because grass can tend to get overused by the dogs, and, but that particular type of mulch was problematic for dog paws and things, so asking to review that. We don't necessarily have any standards, but it was an issue that I wanted to bring to your attention. So staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Provide us the dimensions of the one- and two-car garages to show there's adequate space for garbage recycling receptacles. A landscape plan that better shows the type and trees to make sure that we have the tree canopy requirements met. How is the area of open space to be maintained? A little bit clearer maintenance schedule and irrigation wasn't really addressed in the initial plan. Continue to receive final plat approval and comply with all of the preliminary planned unit development conditions of approval. With that, I'll take any questions or hear from the applicant at this time.
Do you have any more questions of staff before we? I guess I was unclear on the fence plan that you discussed. You made comments that there was fencing on Minekey. What's the height of that fence? Because that's our front yards, so they wouldn't, are they allowed fences in front yards?
Those nine properties will face the alleyway, and so they don't have access onto Minekey, so those are the front-loaded, single-car garage, so those will be the rear.
And so those are the rear of the property.
Rear on Minekey.
Okay. And so those will be eight-foot-tall fences?
Six-foot tall.
Six-foot?
Mm-hmm. But there'll also be a visual corridor as well, but some of the fencing will fall into the visual corridor, which will be, which is allowed.
So that's where you talked about creating a visual breakup with different types of fencing materials, and I would, is there screening with shrubbery along that Minekey, then?
Yes, and they have proposed different shrubs and trees. There'll be street trees, and then they'll also have to have the area landscaped as well.
And that's part of the landscape plan and maintenance that you talk about in Condition 2, then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Oh, yes, go ahead.
I have one question. The water quality facility, I can't recall if that's new to this plan, or is that already, was that part of the original design? I don't know if we, that was not on the original plan.
It's a little new. It was something that came up during the course of the city council meeting, so Bob would be happy to talk about that.
As part of the site development, they do have to treat stormwater runoff. That's a requirement. The plan that was presented to you early on was in rough in design, and we had some changes to try and make it fit better. It was, it was some design changes, basically, to account for requirements and constructability. So that got refined as we went on. So the final plans probably reflect a more refined design pattern to the stormwater facility, both based on our criteria, clean water service criteria and constructability.
So is this, will all of the stormwater go directly to this first water quality facility, and then any overflow into the existing water or water quality? Or is this designed for just a certain area of the project?
The area has to be treated for the two-year storm flow. So basically, everything goes to this to the two-year. After that, you get a bypass. A 25-year storm event, it discharges. I don't believe they're discharging to the existing system. I believe they're going to be discharging to the stream corridor, but I think the engineer can refresh my memory. I haven't seen the plans in a little while. Craig's been taking care of that, but I believe that that is the system design as it stands right now, is that the overflow from this, a 25-year storm event, discharges directly to the stream corridor, which is allowed.
Okay. Is that...
Yeah, thank you.
And that raised a question. I tried, I went back, and I saw only a couple of minor changes from what we recommended to what council approved, so I had noted, were there any other significant changes from what we had already approved?
That was...
Just that was the only one? Okay.
That was the major one, but again, that's a refinement. That's a refinement as you go through the process. You have to get the site laid out, get it squared away, and then once you've got the site laid out, then you can go back and hit your stormwater facility, make sure it captures everything, and then take into account constructability, you know, trying to squeeze it into a tight place and make sure you can do all that. That all got captured, too, so, you know, that's basically the last thing you try and work out on the site after once you've got the infrastructure and all the hardscape.
Okay.
So that made the open space amount reduced a bit, but it was still within, within meeting the requirement. I think it reduced a couple percent of the area of usable open space, and it was up in the tracks, top of the, by Cedar Brookway and at the edge of the eastern, northeastern boundary. Track, Track B. D?
Now, lost my color.
That, and they were also concerned with the proposed use of Track K for the dog park, and I don't know if they had gotten to the dog park idea with you folks, but some of the issues with respect to signage, to make sure that that was marked, and talking about the vegetated corridor and some questions about making sure that there were... about the vegetated corridor and some questions about making sure that there were appropriate signs to pick up after pets and things like that.
Yeah, well, it's also the dedication of the pedestrian access ways that I think came through council too, so, okay.
I have a question about the dog park. Is that, is that going to be signed so exclusive use is for the residents or, because it's not a City of Sherwood public? It is a City of Sherwood public. It's not, so it's going to be, okay.
It is going to be a private dog park. The pathway to the big trail is going to be public. So people can walk from Minneke and Cedar Brookway through the property and go, you know, to the school or wherever along the trail that they want to go.
And the, the trail is, is it outside the entrance?
So you, I have that.
To the dog park?
It's on the other-
It's outside the fence? Okay.
I don't know if I can zoom in on that. There you go.
All right. All right. And we will call, sorry, every piece of paper, Andy Teeman. I hope I pronounced it correctly.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Simpson. Name is Andy Teeman. I'm a project manager for D.R. Horton. Address is 4380 Southwest McAdam Avenue, Suite 100, Portland, Oregon 97239. I'd like to thank staff for their recommendation for approval. I have read the staff report and the conditions of approval and I agree with them. And we will satisfy those conditions with our building permits and other plans and as we go through the process. So I, I thought Michelle did a, an excellent job presenting of, you know, the, the little changes that we've made since the last time you've seen this project. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's just pretty basic, similar, you know, just showing the renderings. This is our, our site plan that shows the, the open spaces and, and the proposed homes that we would build. Here's an example of a, an alley-loaded plan. This is a three-plex. Next one is a, a four-plex and a five-plex. That would be in the, in the center of the project, side by side. The next is a front-loaded, single-car garage townhome that will face Street A or Berkshire. And this is a streetscape of the four-plex and five-plex attached townhomes. Here's also a rendering of what the single-family detached homes would look like that would face Cedar Brookway. And here is the site plan again for reference. In regards to the condition for, for the garbage receptacles, I did speak with our architect and he's making revisions right now. On the, on the detached homes, it's a, it's really, the garbage receptacles will be stored in their, their side yards. There's enough room to store that. On the alley-loaded plans, there is enough room, there are two-car garages and there is enough room to store the garbage receptacles in the two-car garage and allow two cars to park in there. So I'll provide exhibits to Michelle when we go to building permits to show how, how we meet that. We did get the actual size from the garbage disposal company. We called them, got the dimensions. There's two different sized containers and we're going to design it to the, to the larger size. So there, there shouldn't be any restrictions there. Regarding the front-loaded townhome buildings, the single-car garage, we, we looked at that. It started to get pretty tight, so what we wanted to do was shift the garage door over about a foot. So that the surface area, the elevation will still be the same, it's just the garage door will be just shifted over, up foot. And, and what that will allow is a, the, the plan right now, the garage door is centered to the garage interior space. And it, and when you shift that garage door over, that allows a larger area on one side that will allow those garbage receptacles to be stored. So that'll be a change that we'll make and submit that with our building permits. The, it'll be pretty insignificant, the, the change that you'll see on the elevations. Really, the space will be, there'll be more space between the garage door and the front door. So if you could imagine that front elevation, you'll just see a little bit more space between the garage door and the front door. And that's where we would make that adjustment.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
So can those receptacles be removed from the garage while the cars are in the garage? Or do the cars have to be out of the garage in order to, in order for the, the width of those trash cans to, or receptacles to be removed?
Yeah, the garage doors are eight feet wide. And so to, you know, the width of your car, it's, to answer your question, no. You're going to have to take the car out to be able to get the garbage cans in and out. There's just not enough room because of the garage door width and the, the width of the cars.
Are you comfortable with the owners or the tenants of the homes doing that every once a week or whenever they have to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think, I mean, we've built these townhomes. The alley-loaded townhomes we built in, in Washington had a great success. The front-loaded townhomes, we built quite a few in Happy Valley. And, and we see that that's what they do on, on an everyday basis. It's, it's not that much of an inconvenience. If someone's, you know, obviously there's a parking spot in the driveway and another parking spot in the, in the garage, but they just have to maneuver their cars to be able to get those trash cans in and out. So it shouldn't be an inconvenience at all. And in, in regard to the, the open space areas and the maintenance of those, we, we do plan to irrigate the open space areas and it'll be maintained by the homeowners association. And we will develop an operation and maintenance plan for that landscape area. So it'll be, we would put a maintenance plan that shows, you know, how often the grass will be mowed, how often the bark, bark dust will be, you know, replenished. It's a pretty detailed schedule that we can provide and, and show you what the HOA responsibilities would be.
So the homeowners, homeowners association retains ownership of all of the pocket parks within this project?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So other than that, I'm, I think Michelle did a great job and if you have any questions?
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question.
Beth has a question first.
Oh, go ahead.
And this is something we're, I know it's industry standard. I have to say your illustrations look fantastic. It looks like a beautiful development and I just do not think that they're accurate in the amount of space on the side. So as an industry, I would love to see this altered to really show what these developments are going to look like.
Mm-hmm.
Because ultimately, this is not what it's going to look like.
Sure.
Because the neighbors are going to be right next to each other.
They're going to be right on top of each other. And so every time we look at these plans, and I'm not trying to pick on you guys because you're just the latest applicant, but it's just every time we look at these plans, it's that, that's what we see. Oh, it's going to look so gorgeous. And then, you know, when you go see the finished product and you see the livability, it, it's not representative.
Sure.
And so as an industry, I think that that's something that the developers really need to look at. When you're showing these to planning commissions, I would like to see a more accurate representation of how these neighborhoods are going to be impacting each other, how the homes are going to be set next to each other. Because I've frankly not seen any of these developments going in and like, oh yeah. And you know when you're looking at them, it's going to be that way, but at the same time, it's, it's hard when you're sitting here. I'm really, I know you're doing the best with this development. I'm still struggling after the initial approval. I voted for the approval because I felt that we are constrained under Metro's guidelines. But at the same time, you know, I ended up talking to staff for quite a while afterwards. I struggled tremendously with, it, it still feels like a very tight development and I'm very concerned about the livability that it's going to bring to our community.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, you know, it's zone high-density residential and we, we did try to implement detached into the, into this. So yeah, it was a very difficult project to design and with the regular shape of the property as well. So yeah, I, I think this is going to turn out, turn out well. You'll be, you'll be, I think you'll be surprised on how it turn-
And I hope so. It just, it does feel, it still feels to me like it's going to, with all the measures we've, you've brought to the table, it still feels like it's going to be a very, very tight arrangement for those homes.
Yeah, no, there's no doubt about it. It's going to be, it's a dense little community.
Yeah, I, I think, but I think that's partly why, that's why we have codes that say this is the size things need to be. I think you guys have, what I see you guys have met the requirements for that.
So I have one concern that I don't think, and I, we're not revisiting the PUD as a commission, we're looking to see if you've met the code. And in the code townhouse section, it specifically states that, and it's 1644-010-E4 in the building design, the roofs of each attached townhome must be distinct from the other through either separation of roof pitches or direction variation in roof design or architectural feature. Hipped, gabled, gabled or curved roofs are required and flat roofs are not permitted. And I have looked at the building designs and there is particularly one building that I am concerned that that does not meet the criteria.
Okay.
Well, actually two of them. And, and I'm struggling with this because I'm not a roof engineer, so I don't know if you're making a structurally unsound building by making, so what you're showing up in the picture where you have the split roof where you get some on some side and, you know, that looks like two buildings, two homes and two homes, but what you're actually representing is four and five. So I'm struggling with if we had, yeah, there's four on that one and there's five on that one. But if we made five distinct roofs, that would look really busy. So I can appreciate the, the compromise between trying to get roof designs that make distinct features and making a really busy one. But there's one that does, has absolutely, the, the three-plex, three-plex facing Southwest A Street, that one has no roof distinction, but the, oh, where'd it go?
Yeah, I think I, I have it up on that screen. Is that the one? Yeah, we could, we could add a roof break in, in one of those interior units. That shouldn't be a problem.
Where, yeah, so it's a compromise between, and the other one, lots 58 through 62, you have a five-plex with no roof break. And so from, from the backside of this, it is a very long, big roof.
Sure, yeah. No, we can, we can add a roof break in those buildings. That shouldn't be an issue.
There's, yeah, there's no roof, there's no roof line. See how the roof line breaks on those other buildings? And so I, I guess from my perspective, the code says we need distinct roofs for each unit. And I can agree that, and the two that we're looking at, 54 through 57, there, it looks like three distinct, even though I recognize there are four units, we have an architectural interest that meets the intent of the code. But in lots 58 through 62 and the three-plexes, we're not meeting the intent of the code. Is that-
Yeah, I agree. We can, we can, we can add a roof break in that very easily. That should not be a problem.
Yeah. So he's not on his microphone, so he's-
I'm sorry. Yeah, looking at that, you know, at 63 through 65, the alley three-plex facing courtyard would be the same thing. It, it, it's a continuous run of roof across three units.
Yep.
So you do have those dormer faces, but no actual along that length.
I did feel that with that, with the three-plex, it still made sense, but the five, it definitely ran too long.
Yeah. And it, and it depended on how far the dormer went up into it and what the back of the building looked like. So that was a condition of approval that we would like to have added. And I would ask staff to draft something while we go through the rest of our discussion and deliberation. And I know the applicant's still testifying and we've just taken a bunch of his time asking questions. Are there any other questions of the applicant before we call for other test-
Yeah, I have, I have some questions. The landscape plan that has been provided, is that more of a conceptual plan or is this a, something that will be utilized for installation?
It'll be utilized for installation. There'll probably be some added details to construct it, but for the most part, that's the, the plant materials that we would like to use and install.
Okay. Because there's a conflict between the, your renderings and the plan itself. You, you're showing quite of a nice enhancement of the landscaping with plant material in the fronts. And all we see on the plans are just lawn without any plant material at all. And with the, the restrictive areas of landscaping in front of the buildings, I really, and the possibility of utility vaults, whether they're at-grade or boxed, I could not see that, see some of those areas not being in lawn, which would require some type of ground covers or shrubs. What I would not want to see is rock, gravel, fake plants. So I'm hoping that, you know, your, the requirements of the CCRs would prohibit people from putting things in the yard that would not be cohesive with the rest of the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think we need to, we can easily restrict certain materials, but our intention was to have grass and some ground cover and shrubs in the front yard and not just have all grass. So hopefully that wasn't misleading. Our intention was to have grass and, and shrubs in the, in the front yards.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for the app?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do have, regarding the, the CCNRs, the, from, from what you had discussed in the previous meetings, that D.R. Horton would maintain the project site until the last house or townhouse is sold, is, was that still correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then after that, the, there will be a, a management company that would oversee the project along with the homeowners association? Is that correct?
That, that is correct. So what we would do is we would hire a, a management company as soon as we, even before we build homes, as soon as we're done with the development, we create all these open spaces. And as soon as those open spaces are landscaped, we need to start maintaining that. So that's when we would hire an HOA property management company. And they would hire, you know, landscapers to maintain those areas while we're building. And then as we get occupancies, we just continue with that same management company until the last home is sold. And then at that point, the board will turn over to residents of that community. So that's how we, we would operate the, the HOA in this community.
Another question regarding the purchase of homes. I live in a development where there are CCNRs and the original person who purchased the home would have to live in the home for a year before they could actually rent it. What, are there any, anything regarding someone who could buy maybe a whole series of townhomes and just rent them out?
I'm not aware of any restrictions that we have in our, in our, as far as rentals go. I can, I don't have the CCNRs in front of me. I can pull them up. But we, we typically don't restrict that. Now, with that said, I don't think we sell to a high number of investors. We, our typical buyer is, is, is a home buyer. Or it could be a, an investor that rents out, but not like they would buy the whole block or half the, half the subdivision. Typically about 40% of the population rents. So just in general, you're probably going to get 40% that's going to rent out of this community. That's just standard. But our, our typical home buyer is a, you know, middle-class American family. So, so we have no intentions in selling to an investor to, to rent this community out. Our intention is to buy to a, to a family.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So you know, questions of the applicant at this time? How much time is left for rebuttal, based on some of our interruptions?
They have about six and a half minutes used, so about 23 and a half. And that was before the big questions started.
Okay. Very, quite a bit of time for rebuttal, 23 and a half minutes. All right. Are there any proponents or opponents? And we have one other, and that would be Bill Sweet.
Hi. Never done this before, so bear with me. Bill Sweet, 21756 Southwest Rolledge Avenue in Sherwood, Oregon. And I have a question, and the gentleman had the view of the question that I had about the trail. Can you bring up the plat map on here for me?
Sure, yeah.
And it might help, and the dog park, yeah, right there. So the trail that's going past the dog park is going down the hill, crossing the wetlands, and coming back and connecting to the trail that runs behind the vineyards, okay? Who's going to maintain that? Because that dumps back into my backyard. And my problem with it is, I already have people back there in the middle of the night drinking, smoking, the kids come down there on their skateboards, they go off into the trees. I mean, you can be out there any, like on a summer night, especially 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, New Year's, they were down there lighting off fireworks. Is there going to be somebody patrolling this? Because you're opening this up now to a whole group of other homes. And that's my concern. And the dog park would be my second concern. I own two Siberian Huskies. If they're going to walk in my backyard through that trail, then I should be able to use that dog park. It shouldn't be exclusive.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And we'll have the applicant respond to the maintenance on the trail.
Okay. So is the trail going through regardless? I mean, is that like a done deal? Because I noticed the city was down there and did some flagging.
I'll ask the staff to respond to how the Cedar Trail, Cedar Creek Trail project and what it means.
So the Cedar Creek Trail is a, is a little bit different project. That's going to be through the Cedar Creek corridor.
Well, it's labeled Cedar Creek Trail Extension.
Well, that's, sorry about that. For that confusion. That is just a local connection to the school and the, the local trail. And those are public trails. It's owned by, owned and maintained by the city. And so that's part of their maintenance work to, to continue on with that. And with respect to any issues that you see, I would urge you to, to contact the authorities and that they should, should be monitoring that as they would anything. But usually, when there are more trail users, then there's less crime as well, because there's more eyes on the trail, just like on, on a public street. And so that's, that's the, the hope, is that it'll be used by the people that, that live in, in the neighborhood. With respect to the dog park, unfortunately, the Parks Board or City Council, they made the decision that this was going to be owned by the homeowners association, so it isn't city property. They didn't want to take on the maintenance responsibilities for the property, and they saw that the site was just too small, really, to be more than just a neighborhood, for the, for the neighborhood to, to use. And so that, they made their decision that way. Some of the smaller parks are a little bit harder to maintain for city staff and public works, and they made that call.
Michelle, so the Cedar Brook, or I'm sorry, the Cedar Creek Trail, even though it's coming through the, the PUD, that, that whole trail is still part of the public trail, correct? I mean, it, it, it crosses through the wetland, and it's marked on the map Cedar Creek Trail. Is that, is, is the trail through the development not part of the public trail, or is that-
It's a different, it's a kind of a spur. The main corridor follows the Cedar Creek corridor, so that low spot on 99W in between that area, north, let's see if I can pull that up, north of, oh, I don't have the-
You don't have power.
That's okay. That's all right. Go ahead.
So within, that's the Cedar Creek corridor. This is kind of a spur, that's, that's a different, kind of a tributary to the creek.
Right.
And so that, that wet area will connect a different way. You know, people could use that and connect along Minneke, and then go along 99W, and then connect around that way. Or in the future, it could be a connection through the vineyards and cross over to connect with the main Cedar Creek Trail. But at this point, it is not part of the federal grant project for the Cedar Creek Trail.
But it is part of the master plan within the city for transportation-
It's a transportation connect.
Pedestrian, street connectivity.
So it is going to connect to the vineyards?
It is, it is going to connect to the vineyards.
At some point, or is that part of this project?
As part of this-
Through this part, through this project.
As part of this-
Why are they, why are they connecting it right there? What's the point of connecting there? Is this to allow kids to get to school easier?
So, so this is part of the master plan that we had through the transportation system plan, which included pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. And there was a connection identified, and as the development occurs, it's the development's responsibility to provide services deemed appropriate as part of the whole master plan. A road has to go through, and it has to connect, trails has to connect, bike and pets have to connect, and this was identified, so.
Yeah, it's a dirt trail now, and people use it all the time. I mean-
That's correct.
They go, they go up and down there with flashlights all night long and stuff like that, and you can hear them out there.
That's correct. That's why it was located there. It's an existing access for major things.
Yeah, it was, it's existing just because people decided to use that as a way to get up and down. But if you're doing this so people don't have to walk around the street, and the kids can get to the schools easier, it would make much more sense to put it all the way up at the other end, where it comes out right by the park, which has the sidewalk that goes right to the schools, rather than put it down here.
Except there's no, except, except for the 99 access is up at Minneke and 99, for crossing, because you have the high school. So-
Okay.
It makes sense that it follows Minneke up and then crosses over the wetland.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't really go through their development. It goes along the side, along the street.
Okay. Well, with all due respect to everyone in the room, you don't live there, and you aren't going to have to deal with it when you go home at night. I am, okay? And my neighbors. So maybe next time, I guess I should pay more attention, or you should come and knock on somebody's door and say, hey, look, we're going to put a path in your backyard. Is it going to be lit? Is that going to be lit? So how is that going to deter crime and people going down there and doing what they do now? If it's not even going to be lit, it's still going to be a dark hole, and they go down there in the middle of the night, and you can come out there anytime you want to and sit in my backyard, and I'll give you all the coffee or beer you want. And you can watch the people go down there and smoke their pot, and smoke their cigarettes, and they're down there yelling and screaming. And it's not every night, okay? It's not every night, and it's not all night long, but on a summer night, when you have your windows open, and I have air conditioning, but I still open the windows, and you can hear people out there at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, doing whatever it is they're doing.
Yeah, I don't think any of our walking trails through Woodhaven are lit, are they? I don't think they are. I've never seen-
No.
All right.
And I walk my dogs. I've lived in Sherwood 20-plus years, okay? This town, to me, has really changed, obviously.
Right.
It's no, it's no different than Orange County, California, as far as I'm concerned. But it just seems like you're making the city so big and so congested that there's, it's just way blown out of proportion.
Okay. Are there any other concerns that we can address at this time regarding-
No, how's the dog park coming for the city, though? If you want to, do you know anything about that? There's anybody here from the Parks Department?
Okay. We can't address that.
Because I was going to put it up at Snyder Park, and I was just wondering how that was coming.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a separate, separate from this, this particular here.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no other cards. Would the applicant care to provide rebuttal? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and go into deliberation. Staff, have any, well, I know you have at least one final comment regarding a new condition of approval.
Right. And just to, to clarify the, the lots that you're interested in seeing the townhomes, we could make it all of the townhome, all of the townhome units to make sure that it come-
So I would just say that, that there has to be a roof break at no more than two, there, there can't be more than two units without a roof break, so that the three has, does that make sense? Has one, and the five has more than one.
I think I'm most concerned about the five at this point.
Yeah.
The three, it's like we almost live with, but the five definitely needs an additional.
So I, I was the one who raised it, and I, I like your language for doing no more than two without a roof break. Our code calls for-
Every one.
Each one being distinct, but in looking at the other design elements that they have, which are the gables and the other, the glazing that they do on the end of the building, I feel they've met all the other criteria, and by, by providing roof breaks at least every two units in conjunction with the gabeling and whatever other architectural terms are appropriate, they would be in compliance with a distinct roof per unit. Is that-
Yes. I like that view, so, well, thank you.
But you're right.
Any thoughts?
No, I agree.
All right. Are you able to, do you want a couple of minutes to craft that language?
Um, maybe a minute or two.
Okay. Are there any other questions that can be asked, or any other discussion points that are related to this?
Hey, can I ask Tim another question about the dog park? So in light of Michelle's-
Only if I reopen the public here.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind. So I don't want to bug Michelle because she's busy, so.
So the dog park itself, so not that we were dismissing the citizen's concern, but that is part of the master plan within our-
Well, I was just curious about the, if, the material that was going to be used, if the material that was proposed maybe wasn't the best, what were they going to use instead?
There was a recommendation because the, it's within the staff report.
Have you ever been to the dog park in Tooleton, where they, it's a pretty, you know, the wood chips is really hard on the paws?
Yeah.
So they're discovering it's not a good mechanic, you know, means, but I think it's hard to find in these smaller dog parks. Grass is, if you're Mount Tabor, where it's a huge area-
Right. Well, there's so many pine needles, it kind of breaks that up, and so-
Right.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. I asked all my, I already asked all my good questions.
Yeah, I understand the concern about the trail, the backyard. We have trails all through Woodhaven that go through people's backyards and, I mean, we have a lot of trails. It's one of the things that-
Well, it adds to livability.
Yeah.
Exactly. For people being able to walk to schools and-
And exercise, walk, period. There's a lot of, a lot of communities would love to have the, the trails that we have here.
So based on the discussion of the commission, I would recommend adding a condition of approval number six. Prior to issuance of building permit approval, provide that the roofs of the townhome, that there are roof breaks at least every two, on every two units. And then that, sorry. One roof break per every two units.
Correct.
Yep.
At a minimum of every two units.
At a minimum, yes.
At a minimum.
All right. That's-
Are you ready?
All right. Ready as I can be.
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for Cedar Brook PUD Final Development Plan, PUD 14-01 and SUB 14-01, based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and existing condition and new condition mentioned now in the staff report.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we recommend, that we are the, we approve PUD 14-01 and SUB 14-01. Are there any further discussions?
I just want to come in, I'm actually going to abstain from the vote tonight, because while I feel the applicant has, I'm not going to vote against it, but I'm going to abstain. I feel that the applicant has met the code requirements. I still struggle with, you know, as the gentleman here earlier said, you know, the kind of development we're doing in this area. I drive along Dewey quite frequently, and I see that tight kind of nature that happens with, you know, when we're doing parking on one side and not on the other, and I still have some serious concerns about how that impacts the livability of the community, so I'm going to abstain tonight. And I recognize that there was a code change, you know, there was a zoning change for this property, and I do feel that you've met the requirements, but I personally cannot cast a yes vote, so I'll be abstaining.
All right. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Yep.
All right. The motion has passed. Thank you very much. And I can make it back to my agenda. We have planning commissioner announcements. I know there have already been two announcements. I wanted to bring one more comment to the staff, which is something the citizen brought to me, which is, when we go forward with these code amendments and other things that are community-wide, is it possible to have a notification within the utility bills? They may note that there were other things that were being able to put on the utility bill in a big red font. So as we get, going forward with these code amendments, it would be nice if, as a planning department, we'd be able to use the utility bills as a, an additional way to say code amendment's coming.
I can comment on that. We absolutely can, and we've actually looked into that on a number of occasions. There's a cost associated with it, so it's not just, hey, put this flyer in there, there's a utility billing-
Not a flyer, but the words right on the utility bill in red font. We, well, it's been on our water bill in the past. There's, you know, they say happy holidays or whatever, and it prints on every bill, and it's different every time, and it seems like we should be able to-
Let me talk to the other managers. I don't, I don't know what the process is to do that and what sort of crazy precedent we'd be setting by doing that.
Okay.
So let me follow up and get back to the planning commission.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Any plays coming up that we should know about, Russell?
Sound of Music, first official full Broadway-like show in the new community cultural center for the first two weekends of March, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, where we cast last week, and we have-
It's not Sound of Music.
What did I say? Mary Poppins. Thank you. Julia, Julia really knows what's going on. It's, it's Mary Poppins. I know. I am actually the music director. You think I could get the name right? So they're rehearsing as of tonight. We have a fabulous cast. It's going to be a great way to, to open up the brand-new center. We're very excited, yeah. Yeah, the, the auditorium seats, almost 400 people, and the stage is about 40 feet wider than Stella Olson. We'll have like 75 people on the stage at one time singing at the same time.
In our orchestra, NIMH is a place to rehearse every Thursday.
It's very cool.
So, we're good.
Excellent. All right. Any other announcements? All right, we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.